I want to thank everybody for coming to the regular council meeting for the city of South Fulton. At this time, I would like to first call the robe.
Mayor, you need to close out executive session and the law session.
Let me do that first. First of all, there was no actually taking executive session, is correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, but we have, once you close out executive session, we have two votes that resulted from executive session.
Okay.
That will be made publicly.
I got you. How did you motion to close executive session?
I'd like to make a motion to close executive session.
Properly move to second, in discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor? That passes. The attorney has a couple of. Madam Attorney, I understand you have a couple of. Votes that came out of, once taken public, came out of executive session?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We have one deals with real estate. And that motion will be presented by Councilwoman Jackson. And that is to authorize the city attorney to present the Meadows facility proposal to the Fulton County School Board.
Jackson, is that the motion?
That's the motion.
All right, in the second.
Say.
Properly move to second, in discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor? The clerk that passes you down.
Mayor, I have, the second item deals with litigation that resulted from executive session, but there is two ordinances that I have sent into the clerk. And Councilman Baker has a motion with respect to those two ordinances.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt the emergency ordinance, the minute Title I, and authorize no emergency copy or such ordinance for perjury to date.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, good, good. I don't want to hear that. All right, second, properly move to second. All those in favor? In discussion first, in discussion, all those in favor? That passes. Ms. Khalid, are you voting?
Sure. Probably on break.
All right, that passes. That passes you down, sir. Mr. Clerk, you got it, Clerk? I think that we've had, now, I turn, I think we had you two votes right.
Yes, those were the, the all these votes.
Madam Clerk, go ahead. Let me settle this. Pass to come up and give the indication. For those of you that would like to stand, if you will, or meditation. Let us pray. Dear gracious and wise God, we thank you for tonight. When we individually look over our lives, we see how good you have been to us, but even greater collectively. Because together you have called us and destined us for greatness in the city of South Fulton. We thank you for our leadership, every department, and all that you have set forth to do throughout this city. Let your wisdom continue to fall afresh upon us tonight, so that everything that is said and everything that is done will remind us there's someone greater than us that's in charge, that placed us in charge. So we give you the praise and honor, let us all say, amen. Let you lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Madam Clerk, are you ready now? Excuse me, are we ready?
Yes, sir, we are.
We know you're going to allow your name, sir, and take this city with this particular identity of being the president. The ideas and your vision, the movement forward. So at this time, I'm going to give you the, I hope you'll all be ready to write in please. I pray thee, Brus Broom. Do solemnly swear that I will well and truly discharge the duties as fire chief of the city of South Fulton in all matters which require my official action through the best of my knowledge and skill. And I will so act as in my judgment would be most conducive to the welfare and best interest of the entire city. I further solemnly swear that I am not the holder of any kind of or public money due to state and that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution of the United States of America. So help me God. Ladies and gentlemen, your new fire chief. One day.
Not today, let's call this my spiritual.
All right.
Yes, we are very proud of him. And I know that he will do a great job. He is a wonderful person, he is so kind, and he is a God-able man. So you all have selected an excellent fire chief.
Boss got to say something.
Good evening and welcome to the council members and mayor and to the restness of the city of South Fulton. We are just excited to be here in the heart of your great city. Thank you so much.
I just want to tell everybody, thank you, Mayor, council members. Mr. Donald Smith is willing to feel for leaving me, giving this opportunity. I will do a very good job. And I remember when I was watching America with City of the State, City of the Dress, and said that South Fulton is where you want to be. And now I can honestly say, Mayor, South Fulton is where I live. Thank you, we look forward to working with you.
Welcome Chief Broom. I just want you to know, great expectations for you. And I heard what your mom said, and if you do anything, I suppose you will tell your mom.
I guess I heard you a grown man.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Do we get a photo? Y'all get a photo. I'm sorry. Do we get the photo? Chief, you got to come back.
Yes, okay.
One, two, and three. One, two, and three. One, two, and three.
All right.
Next, we will have the square and development authority number.
It's a nice looking group. Yes. Yeah, I look very nice. Very nice. Well, we already knew you'd come here. How are you? Good as new.
I feel like I'm directing the choir. Is this everybody? You missing one? They won't be a picture. Okay. Would you raise your right hand? All right, repeat after me. I, I understand directly do hereby solemnly swear that I will basically and impartially discharge the duties as a director of the city of South Fulton, Georgia, Development Authority, to the best of my ability. You are now sworn in, Mr. Why do you think? Anybody want? Okay, let's take this.
You got it, everybody?
Yeah.
One, two, and three.
Make it look tall.
One, two, and three. One. Any day. Trying to get you all black and white, I'm black and white right now. One, there we go, two, and three. Thank you.
Next, you have the first.
You have the first.
Uh, no, I didn't yet. Who was? Chief? Chief. Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is the adoption of council agenda. Are there any changes to the council agenda? I have to be put under the consent the board of departments for Councilmember Dunn, Mr. Bradford Johnson, to the environmental committee, and Councilmember Gilding, Mr. Shahid Abdul Salam, to the environmental committee.
I accept the motion.
Was that, you know, was that to ask?
To put those on?
Yeah, we can just put them on the regular meeting agenda and just have them vote. Because you're, you guys created ordinance early upon incorporation where you agreed about ordinance that you wouldn't ask.
Okay, I think you're absolutely correct. So let's state that for the regular agenda. Okay, go ahead.
No warrants will be added to the regular agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Hearing done. I'll accept the motion.
I move to accept the council agenda.
No, to adopt the agenda.
The regular?
Yes.
I move to adopt the regular agenda.
Properly move to second, in discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor? Clerk, that's you down.
Next is to approve the council minutes from May 28, 2019.
I'll accept the motion. To approve the council minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from May 28, 2019.
Properly move to second, in discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor? Madam Clerk, that's you down.
The next item is public comments. Speakers will be granted a total of two minutes each, and public comments will not exceed thirty minutes. Speakers will not be allowed to yield or donate their time to other speakers. Speakers must identify themselves and their address prior to speaking. Speakers may only address the presiding officer. Shall observe all those of the quorum. No debate, disrespect, or obscenity shall be tolerated. The presiding officer shall rule any such individual out of order that fails to comply with the foregoing. Mayor, council, we have a total of nine. As I call your name, please line up at the podium. Gina Gilding, Paul Bartos, Betty Bartos, Rodney Haley Hadley.
Go right ahead.
Sorry.
Go right ahead, please.
Gina Gilding, I live at 7440 Harton Road in Fairborough. And I sent each of you, I think I might have missed Mr. Baker, but I sent you all some pictures of the landfill where some smoke is continuing to come out of the ground. And it has for the last three days, I know. But what I'm here today for is to see if we could get some kind of funding set up so we can get some air quality and water testing and soil testing from the site to make sure that the contamination that's on the site does not spread into the local creek and the swamp area that is adjacent to that. I know that Mrs. Carter's lake has already been tested, but hopefully we can get some more funding to make sure that we can be, make sure that everybody's safe. And now that the fire supposedly is out, which I don't really think it is, I just think it's just not smoking as much just because he hadn't been digging around over there. But hopefully, moving forward, we can get some things taken care of and get this over with.
Yes, thank you so much. Next.
Hi, I'm Paul Bartos. A District Four guy, 6750 Short Road in Fairborough. You all have the photographs that I asked Cory to hand out, so I'm referring to those as I speak. In the May 20th trial, the judge asked the EPD lord to state whether he thought the landfill fire was out or not. After uncomfortably hemming and hawing around for a few seconds, she irritably pressed him for a yes or no answer. He replied, "Yes, the fire is out." The peanut gallery, as the judge described us, erupted into a "No, it's not" outburst. And the reason for that is illustrated in the photos in front of you. I go by there often, at least a couple times a week, and take photos of these ever-present smoke plumes. Went again yesterday and saw the same old, same old, and smelled the same nasty stench. For whatever reason, the EPD did not and has not gone on site to personally see and smell what you are looking at. There's something bad going on there, and it needs proper inspection and measurement. Can we get your support to have these trustee's smoke plumes thoroughly tested with professional air and soil monitoring equipment? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm Betty Bartos, District Four, 6750 Short Road. Here again, ask for help with the ongoing Bishop Road landfill fire and the remediation problem. As well as our fears that not only will this be hugely ongoing, but that the dumping will start back up again. We were shocked at the trial when the EPD told the judge the fire was out. I chased the EPD reps who had testified down the hallway to ask who came out and placed the test equipment and when? How did they come up with that conclusion? I wanted proof of testing. They literally ran away and said, "Let's check public records." I can't find these public records. We were there, taking pictures practically daily, plumes of smoke always, and a stench that blows up everywhere. Tests need to be run 24/7 for a number of days in a number of locations, and then periodically again, and this was never done. And speaking of grants for public works projects, so now we know our EPD cannot be trusted to properly test the site. It's been eight months. Nor parlay to the community that we, so we have to pay for equipment and labs to have it done, so we can trust the results and the conclusions. And this is costly. We pay big tax dollars to live in Fulton County, more than anywhere in the whole state, and extra now that we're a city. And so I anticipate that the money needed for this testing can be made available. The fire is not out. Competent engineers required to put it out and clean up the site will need properly done test results. And all of us who have made multiple trips to our doctors and allergists and are worried we're contracting lung cancer, need these test results. We have to be able to prove, A, that there really is a fire, B, it's not just wood smoke, and C, it's toxic and can never be allowed to happen in our city, anywhere, ever again. Please, shut this guy down forever.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Rodney Hadley. I live at 7790 Hall Road, that is District Four. Hall Road is a gravel road. It's actually more dirt than gravel. That in itself is not a problem. However, when you add the three Fulton County schools that are located on the street and the buses that go by daily, approximately fifty buses twice a day, it produces an ungodly amount of dust. The dust is not only a hazard to your health just ingesting it, but it's a visual hazard as well. I literally almost came into contact or came into, had an accident with two buses. I complained several times. I understand that the road is not included on the T-splice currently, so if it's possible, maybe it can be the infrastructure of District Four be included in HRA, in the UR, excuse me. It's a problem if you can't even go outside during certain times of the day. And it actually takes the dust three or four hours before it settles and moves. And if you live anywhere between a quarter mile of Hall Road, the dust is going to affect you. Recently, fortunately recently, it was sprayed or treated. And from what I understand, that hadn't happened in a number of years. If it wasn't for that, we would not have been able to make it through this dry season we just came through. But you add the buses with that, it's not going to last, and it really needs some type of attention.
Thank you, sir.
Next, speakers Juliet Rankin, Tori Tomlinson, Taylor Tomlinson, Joseph Simler, and Aubrey Denson.
District Four. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to, I guess, acknowledge that you acknowledged that you voted against cityhood when you get State of the City. You acknowledged that you did do that. And I wanted to say, in conjunction with that, the annexations have consequences. So it's like we make a one mistake behind the other, but that had a great consequence on us. And I don't want to see us, and some of the other things I heard you say, like CP has ten hotels, and they got all this debt, and they're getting more debt because, you know, that's how they pay for it. But these are cities that annexed our land to get the hotels, apparently, on Open National also. So basically, we can't try to do things to catch up with them and put us into tax consequences because of that. I know you said at the State of the City that you were not going to, you know, put us into a tax consequence. But I did hear you say that about CP. How are we going to keep up with CP? CP annexed our land, and so did the others. Okay, so we can't try to just hop up from a small step to catch up to the other cities. Also, when you were saying that, I just wanted to bring up that you made a comment when District Four councilperson said that she needed a resolution for UC. But if she says she needs a resolution for UC, she needs one. And I didn't appreciate you speaking out, saying, "Why can't you just go talk to UC?" UC sits inside of our city. We have two cities that sit inside of our city. UC and Fairborough sit inside of our city. If she did need a resolution to talk to them, she wouldn't have said she did need one. And we've been doing this for a long time, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to need you to get on board. City of South Fulton first, not any other city out here. And I keep hearing you do this, and it's gotten old. You've been doing it for a minute. And you need to make City of South Fulton first, not anybody else. I mean, they're not being irresponsible when they're saying they need a resolution. I just wanted to reiterate, we need equality in this area for City of South Fulton. Thank you.
Joseph Simler, 4800 Jones Road, Fairborough, Georgia. I rise because I noticed we're having a problem. Traffic with trucks. Stonewall Tale, Derrick Road, and Jones Road. The tracks, the trucks are growing in numbers as we grow in age. We need something done about the trucks. The eighteen-wheelers, I don't think have any business on those streets. But we have them. What can we do to solve the problem? I know we're short on officers, et cetera. But somebody needs to take some kind of way that we can try to limit those trucks on those roads. They come down sometimes slow, sometimes fast. Some of the limbs from the trees are hanging. When it rains, they scrape the top of the trailer of the eighteen-wheelers. Something is going to happen if we don't do something in order to alleviate the trucks on those roads. I'm pleading with you before we really have a disaster. Especially on these roads. And there are a few moats that trucks are going down where the bridges are not that sturdy, but they go down anyway. Somebody is going to get hurt. And I wish that you all will be able to do something. Try to get some policemen out there to see what's going on, et cetera. I will certainly appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Tori Tomlinson for Open National Entertainment. I believe I brought a few feathers this week with one of my Facebook posts. So first, I would like to say that I apologize to those of you that took my passion for Open National the wrong way. My intent is never to spew negative remarks about the City of South Fulton or its officials. I get very emotional when it comes to having things for our kids to do in our community. And as we always say, when these kids are doing crime, and they're joining these gangs, and they're doing these things, we always say that these kids need something to do. So we, Open National Entertainment, are about improving situations and having positive, nonviolent events in our community. I understand all of my ideas and events will not get the support of the city. We can agree to disagree. For the amount of you who disagree, I can match the same amount of people who does support this event. My intentions were to build the relationships between the citizens and the police, not to hurt it. I'm sorry if my overconfidence and my people and community that I felt the good time would outweigh the BS that most of you people believe would happen. So I wanted to come here today because I feel like the postponement of this event is inaccurate, and I feel like due to the excitement and momentum that we still can knock out the kinks to make this a positive Father's Day event, stop the violence, water event for District 6. It's very, very talked about right now. I have shut it down, but it's very anticipated, so I just ask that you please reconsider. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Taylor Tomlinson out from District 6. And the reason why I think that we should have this is because it's a stop the violence event. And I don't think they will start violence at the event. And if it gets too out of control, that's why we have the police out there. And the kids just wanna have fun, 'cause it's summertime. And I invited all my friends, so can we please have this event? Thank you.
Thank you.
City Mayor and City Councilpeople. My name is Aubrey Denson. I live in District 2, and a resident of the county for 45 years, and City of South Fulton president. My concern tonight is about emergency medical services. My understanding is that we went from AMR to Grady primarily because of the response time. I was shocked when I read an article recently that told about the response time that Grady EMS is having in several of the cities around us. I'm almost 7' 6". And I would like to think that if I needed an ambulance, that one would be there, and that's in 18 minutes or 20 minutes or whatever time, where I think for our city, I believe it was 18 minutes or something. To me, that is an exceedingly long time, and I don't know where I'll be met with it. In other words, if Grady is not working anybody, and AMR, and why, did we change? I just hope that we will look at that and make sure that the residents can get their attention if needed and avoid time to matter. I mean, 18 minutes, I could be a crossbow over. And I'm not ready to cross over yet. I'm still trying to hang on. So that was one concern that I had. And the other one is about the dump trucks, the pickup, the ways industry know. To have so many different companies riding over the street is gonna tear up our streets. We need to look at that, because to me, it does not make sense to have so many different providers. So please look at that again. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, that ends the public comments for this evening.
Okay. Thanks, gentlemen.
I'm sorry. I allow me to... First, we have a very special birthday. My tricey mom and our amazing attorney, the amazing Amelia Walker. Her birthday was June 9th. Yes, since she's been doing an amazing job since signing on, she has not lost a single case on behalf of the City of South Fulton. So thank you so much, and happy birthday.
Okay. Madam.
The next item is approval of consent agenda items. Item number four.
Oh, one more. You have another birthday.
I would like to say happy birthday to our economic developer director. Mr. Christopher Fight yesterday celebrated his birthday. So I would like to acknowledge him. And he's celebrated his birthday.
Okay, Madam Burke.
Approval of consent item agenda, item number four. Proclamation presented to Philip Duval. Item number five. Council approval of a facility use agreement between the City of South Fulton and Future Seekers Inc. at Centtown Park. Item number six. Council approval of facility use agreement between City of South Fulton and Welcome All Park Athletic Association. And item number seven. Council approval to renew the agreement with utility IOT rockets, mobilized technology for equipment and services of all city leaders financed over five years.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we pull the Welcome All Park Athletic Association agreement and put it on the regular agenda. I have a question for Mr. Phillips.
Second.
Yeah, what else? It can move.
We have already approved it.
I don't know. We had approved the consent agenda?
We approved. You approved the agenda, and I ask whether any changes?
Yes, it should.
Well, Ms. Melazi made her motion to reconsider as long as she had voted and that president has got approval. Sorry. I would like to move for a reconsideration to move the Welcome All Park agreement to the regular agenda.
Second. Probably move the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all goes in favor? That passes unanimously.
Okay, so we still need to approve items four, five, and seven on the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve items four, five, and seven on the consent agenda.
Second. Probably move the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all goes in favor? That passes unanimously, Mr. Burke.
Next item is previous agenda items. Council approval of FY18 budget amendment ordinance, second reading.
I will entertain a motion.
I have a question for Mr. Melazi. Mr. Melazi, is the $15,000 for the air testing that I requested, is it still in amendment?
Yes, there it is.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
Probably move the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all goes in favor? Mr. Lee, that passes unanimously.
Next item. Council approval and second reading of code enforcement ordinance.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the code enforcement ordinance.
Probably move the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all goes in favor? Madam Burke, unanimously.
Next item. This council approval and second reading of the finance committee ordinance.
I make a motion to approve the finance committee ordinance.
Probably move the second. Any discussion? All goes in favor? That passes unanimously. That's a name? That's six A's, one N's, by councilman's name.
Next item. Is to approve the appointment of environmental committee members, Mr. Raphael Johnson and Mr. Shaheed Abdul Salam.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointees for those committees.
My second. Probably move the second.
And the correction of his name is Raiford?
Raiford, I'm sorry.
Probably move the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all goes in favor? That passes unanimously.
On to the regular agenda. The first item will be the discussion on the approval of a facility use agreement between South Fulton and Welcome All Park Athletic Association.
Mr. Phillips, I just want some things to go on record, because I want to inform my colleagues yesterday I participated in the committee hearing at the State Capitol, involving a death of a student, John Toddler, on the Welcome All Park football field. And although it did not have one under the perjury of the city, it did have another perjury of the county, that was a very emotional situation for me to sit here and have to explain that. And so I know we are approving this facility agreement for just the football season, but I want to make sure that you go on record to say you are ensuring that they are complying with all the mandated training they're supposed to have. That concussion training, that is heat and hydration training, and that is CPR training. We're supposed to have AEDs at the park, and we're supposed to have... I think that was it. So how can we... I want you to go on record to ensure that this is happening, because we cannot have another John Toddler situation.
So we should have the opportunity to address these specifics. There are already AEDs installed in our facilities. Park rangers have been activated in our partnership with our police department. And officers who are also CPR trained have access to AEDs will be patrolling our parks throughout the entire football season. As it relates to mandated training, that is a proactive step the department put in place as a result of the incident you just referenced. We have, for the last two seasons, partnered with Children's Healthcare of Atlanta's Sports Division to ensure that every volunteer coach is trained by a healthcare professional on heat and hydration protocols, concussion protocols. We have two CPR-certified trainers on our staff that not only conduct CPR certifications for our own summer staff and full-time employees, but does so for every head coach on each of the teams during the football season as well. We put these in place to make sure that we're being proactive. I've talked to some of my colleagues today and other agencies around. Our current protocol exceeds what most other agencies are currently doing, and we want to make sure we continue to be proactive. I take the safety of every child that walks in every park with a fetal series. And so we're gonna do everything we can and then beyond to ensure that every child is in a safe environment.
Mr. and Mrs. Attorney Walker, I do have a heat and hydration policy for coming your way. We need to make sure that... This is a... I understand what you're saying, but we need to make sure we have some... Make sure we have a policy in place on the road. And I did research as well today with so much of the associations that you said that we are affiliated with. And I guess my question is, do we have a staff person from the city side to ensure that if we don't have coaches... Because my understanding is that they're supposed to have credentials in order to be on the field. So if they have not gone through any of these trainings, that are CPR certified, heat and hydration, they have not gone through any of these training, they should not have credentials, and they should not be on our football field. So how do we ensure that this is not happening during games and also during practice?
So we conduct coach certification sessions. We are finalizing those dates now with Children's Healthcare of Atlanta. We require and mandate that all coaches in our system attend. Once they complete concussion protocols, heat and hydration protocols, and head coach CPR certified, we have a badge maker that creates badges that look somewhat similar to this. Each coach that has completed that is required to wear this during practices and games so that our staff can tell who's on the field and whether or not they've been certified through the process I just described, and more importantly, so parents can tell and know that every coach that's on that field should have this around their neck. It's got a picture on it, so you can't borrow somebody else's badge. And that's to let everyone know who's a stakeholder in this process, parents, coaches, and staff, who has been through the process I just described.
So do we have a list of coaches that have that certification? Because for me, I'm not gonna be able to look at that picture from a distance. And so is there any way, I guess, my question is, can we have a staff person spot check to make sure that we don't have people on the field for the game, or have people on the practice field that should not be on our practice field? Is that an unreasonable request?
So that is a request that may go beyond our staffing resources. We're looking at the budget right now and having discussions with our stakeholders and key city leaders about how we approach that to make sure we are providing as much coverage with our staff as possible. I've got some ideas for another time to discuss on that particular issue. The training I mentioned is done every year with each coach, whether or not we had it a year before. And so we're scheduling those dates now. You will know about that as soon as we confirm them with Children's Healthcare of Atlanta. And we know exactly who has been through that training, because all of those names will be in city rec, and we're the ones issuing the badges. As it relates to monitoring practices, as I said, we have some limited ability to do that on game days, on Saturdays, at three separate parks. But for all of the practices at each parks, no, we're not currently staffed to have a staff person monitor each practice. But again, that's an issue that we're addressing as we formulate our budget requests for 2020, and we'll have some ideas forthcoming.
Okay, so I would like to ask, if it's possible, if you please send Mr. Browning an email, an official email, letting him know that if the coaches do not have proper credentials, they are not allowed to coach or be on any of our football fields.
That'd be happening, yes.
Thank you. I request that we approve this agreement.
Council.
Yes, I actually did go to the training for Children's Healthcare at Verde Park last year. And I just wanted to offer the suggestion that now that we have the park patrol coming on board, that they attend those trainings, they could be of help with that certification. And then also, perhaps, for as long as we have this athletic association model, which may change after we do our parks master plan, as long as we have it, maybe they could attend some of those meetings as well, just so they are kept abreast of everything that's happening in our parks.
Well, park rangers are gonna need assets for Sergeant Williams, who has already helped us tremendously and are important to him for our upcoming sessions. In addition to the certification process, we also cover best practices, and I'm sure Sergeant Williams can help us in that regard as well.
Mr. Phillips, I did see what Chief Meadows on yesterday, and he did tell me that the park rangers, he will ensure our CPR certified, and he also ensured me that they all have AEDs, which are ventilators, in their vehicles. So we will have some coverage on that end. And so being said that, I would...
Mr. Lee, would you finish?
Yes.
I would like to move that we approve the facility agreement for Welcome All Park, Welcome All Youth Athletic Association.
Probably move the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all goes in favor? That passes unanimously.
Next item. Request council approval for the Public Works Department to receive a local maintenance and improvement grant, L.M.I.G., in the amount of $60,000, with the City of South Fulton providing 30%, which is $31,110 in matching funds.
I will entertain a motion.
Our request for approval of the Public Works Department to receive a maintenance and improvement grant in the amount of $60,000.
Second.
Property move is second, any discussion?
So what, what will this LMI grant be used for?
This is the piece that you received, the memo, from about a week or so ago for the sinkholes that have been identified, and so the state has kind of kicked in to bring those forward. So it was a three-page memo that highlighted each one of the projects, total of $60,000 that they'll be providing to us for sinkholes that we've identified across the city. I think it's two large ones in particular.
Mr. Brown?
My question was, one looked like it was at a residence, is that, or is it one of the, under the street, or what's going on? And I'm talking about the Greenbauer Lane location.
It's not under a residence.
No, it is not.
It's in the street.
It's on the street, both of them on the streets. It appears, but it starts from actually from a cat's face and going through.
Ms. Dunn, you were here, you asked them?
Mr. Counselor, please.
Okay, Ms. Dunn, you have your idea.
This doesn't exist, this sinkhole, that's on the property of the fire station seventeen, that-
No, ma'am.
So did you have, gotten a quote for that yet?
We have assessed that location, and we're going to be doing a house there. So those, those two sinkholes that we have, those are the biggest sinkholes that we have received to date. And the reason why we went to the state is to ensure that we get additional funding so the sinkholes will not get in the worst condition.
So we want the fire station seventeen, you said it's going to be down in-
Yes, it is not as what it was thought initially when we received the request.
But you don't have a quote yet?
It's not needed.
Okay.
Counselor number, might remember, we sent a brief note to you on that one, that our vendor will be taking care of it, is outside of the LMIG process, but we sent you a brief note saying that we assessed it about two days after your inquiry, and it's, it's in the hopper. We sent you a brief response on that.
Okay, has a motion of protest, all in favor? That passes, you have it.
Next item is council request, council approval for the police department to apply for the Fire Protection Public Safety Foundation Grant to purchase fifteen automatic external divulators layers with a potential award amount of $21,105.
I entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve your request for this grant.
Property move is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, you have it.
Next item, number thirteen, council approval for the police department to apply for the youth gang assistance diversion grant program for funding to support the creation of programs to address rehabilitation of youth gang offenders with a potential award amount of $500,000.
I entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this grant. Second.
Property move is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, you have it. Next.
Item number fourteen, council approval for the police department to enter into a memorandum of understanding with other law enforcement agencies for the law, local law enforcement crime, gun, intelligence center integration initiative grant with a potential award amount of $150,000.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve this request.
Second.
Property move is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, you have it.
Item number fifteen, council approval to enter into an agreement with Smyrna Police Distributors to supply the police department with uniforms, equipment, and footwear as needed in the amount not to exceed $100,000.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve this request to enter into agreement with Smyrna Police Distributors.
Second. Property move is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in-
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Baker.
Mr. Chief, why just sold the Smyrna?
I'm sorry?
Why just sold the Smyrna?
We actually, if you look at the uniforms we've chosen, it's a very unique color. Smyrna is the distributor that we initially started getting all of our equipment from. We went through the procurement process where we went and bitted out our equipment, but there are certain pieces of our equipment that's unique to Smyrna, and a lot of our equipment has already been purchased from them. And so that's one of the reasons we wound up selecting them for our distributor.
Okay, let's vote. Did I make any mistakes?
Make.
Okay, that's approved, seven to one, Mr. Baker.
Six.
Six to one, I'm sorry. Mr. Baker, make. Next.
Item number sixteen, council approval to enter to an agreement with SWIFT Youth Inc. to develop and implement the STEM pilot program in the amount not to exceed $75,000 parks and corporations.
I move to approve the agreement with SWIFT Youth Development.
It's been properly moved is second, any discussion?
Yes.
I'm trying to go in.
Oh my God, let's everybody get in on this. Get on the button. Okay, I think that this round is in.
So my first question is, and I want to thank you, talk about it, to make sure we have STEM programming across the city and the number of parks. And based on this for codes, we're really talking about a limited number of young people having access to the service. Can you talk a little bit about that? And how are you going to select where, given the fact that we have multiple sites?
Certainly. Our intent is to pilot the program in this initial school year. We have a very focused goal in making sure that we align the services from SWIFT with the academic curriculum that our students are currently working on, so that it not only introduces them to STEAM and STEM opportunities, but dovetails closely with what they're currently working on in the school. We figured the best way to do that would be start with a pilot program initially that will work directly with one of our schools, and then create a curriculum that we can then duplicate across multiple sites in the city. Our initial effort was to start at Birdett because we removed future seekers from that site and its proximity to McNair Middle School, which is directly across the street. Again, this is a pilot effort. Our goal is to spread this across the entire city, but we wanted an opportunity for SWIFT to come in. They have made a job offer, I believe, to the current, forgive me, Marvin, this is Marvin Harris, who is Howard, I'm sorry, forgive me, was the director of the program. They currently sought to hire the current program talent management specialist from the Fulton County School System to direct this initial program and help to develop the curriculum. So it will be a step process where we will start at one site and then grow the program to multiple sites.
I entertain a motion. Okay. Counselor Jackson?
You say what I need to, sorry, Birdett.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the number.
Thank you.
Counselor Baker?
Yes, speak to the process, Mr. Baker.
I'll defer to the program manager's procurement process for us. We did a formal solicitation, so I'll let him speak to how that process unfolded.
Good afternoon, Councilman. We did a formal solicitation as a RFP. We had four vendors submit proposals, and SWIFT was of the four that submitted. SWIFT was the lowest and the only one within close proximity for our stated budget. So they were really the only option.
So you say that they were the only option?
With our budget, considering our budget, yes. And the scope of the other proposals, yes. SWIFT was the best, most responsive and responsible considering our budget, our budget concerns.
Were there other people that applied?
Yes, four vendors submitted proposals. The highest proposal came in at $797,000. The second highest came in at $500,000, and the second lowest came in at $196,000, as our budget stated was, as stated in our-
And can you speak to the contract?
The contract is for up to one year, and the structure of it is to be launched as a pilot program. So for the next school year, we'll implement it at one location. If that is successful, then Mr. Phillips will make the motion to council for larger budget to increase the program.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Jackson?
I guess when I heard you say, I know it was the lowest, but you know, I really didn't look at that $797. Is this the joint?
Yes, it is.
How are you? I, I guess my concern is, I want to make sure that we are going to get a quality program, someone that's there, that's going to be interested in making our children be the best they can be.
Yes, I stand behind the review process.
I'm talking.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Jackson, I went through all of the proposals, and when this one was the lowest responsive bidder, I went back through it a second time. I believe the structure as submitted will be very beneficial. Our responsibility is to make sure that the execution of the program matches the proposal. I've sat down and had an extended conversation with Mr. Howard about what our goals are, specifically at Birdett and with McNair, and creating a partnership between the school and the program. I can allow him to speak to that. I have confidence that the proposal has great potential to be successful, but the truth lies in the execution. So you have to take what's on the page and make it work with our kids. I have confidence that there's potential for that to do that, and I have confidence in his ability to do so. But if you would, I'll let him speak for a moment to the program itself.
What I've found out lately is the lowest is not always the best. So-
Good evening, thank you for allowing me the chance to speak. My name is Marvin Howard. I'm from the large city of Alamo, Georgia. We have a population of about 1,500. And I attended Albany State University for computer science, did the dual degree program with Georgia Tech, and moved to Georgia Tech and completed my degree in electrical engineering. After, after college, I went to ConocoPhillips out of Houston, did oil and gas for a while in security, and now I'm back in Atlanta working for a huge health company, as well as doing entrepreneurship for a couple of other small companies that I have. This is close to my heart because I come from a rural area. I know exactly what I needed as a student, what I didn't have, growing up in a rural area, and if it wasn't for my parents who are educators, my dad's a superintendent, my mom is an educator of 32 years and now retired, and I know what it is to be on the opposite side and not have those resources, but I also know what it is to be exposed to those technologies at an other age. I knew I was smart, I knew that whenever I got to Georgia Tech that I was smart, but when I got there, I understood that those people that come from these larger cities and have more exposure, they was, they were asking questions that I never could think of, and it's because they had that exposure at an early age. So myself and two other engineers, we built this program to just do that, expose kids at an early age. I'm confident in my ability, I'm confident in the people that I employ. One hire that we have is Dr. Marsha Francis. She's a Spelman graduate, she's a graduate of UGA as well, and she has a PhD in this type of work. She's worked for the steam truck, and she's doing all of our curriculum for us. She's also the director of specialists and program hiring for the Fulton County Schools. So we're very confident in our ability to build a program that is in alignment with the milestone testing, and with the school testing that you guys, your students see in the city. This, like I said, this is something that I'm passionate about, this is something that I have experience in. We've implemented this program in Houston, where we started with TSU, and a couple of other, Madison High School, and a couple of other schools and organizations throughout Houston, and now that I'm back in Atlanta, my job is to get into APD, as well as the rural areas of Georgia, and serve more in my community, because I know there are more kids like myself. So hopefully, I, like I said, I know the bid is low, but I know it doesn't take $700,000 to help students.
We know that. But what I'm saying is, I just want to make sure that our children are exposed to the different faculties, the different parts that they need in order to succeed in life.
Yes, ma'am.
And not to walk around eating jelly sandwiches and talking on their cell phones during the course, because I will be coming through a deal.
And that's what our program is aligned for. We understand that the theory lessons that students learn in class doesn't always connect. So our job is to make sure that we use technology that they use on a day-to-day basis to make that connection. For instance, we have a lab that, that is around cosmetic engineering. We'll talk about the properties of lipstick, we'll talk about the properties, if you want it to stick, if you want it to last on something, if you don't want it to wear off. What are those properties, what do they do as a job, what does that, what goes into making lipstick? And then we give them the tools that are necessary to make that lipstick. So that lesson connects a little bit more than just reading about something. And that's how all our labs are designed.
Okay, thank you. Let me see one name, Mr. Donald, and maybe the security director. You know, in my brief, the category, Ms. Jackson, was lowest best. It was never lowest B, it was the lowest best B. I don't know if-
Our standard is the lowest responsible.
Which is very similar language, and we're confident in this pilot.
Okay, I just want to make sure because- particularly called you, lowest, okay, yes. And so, okay, okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Let's go. That passes, you have it.
Next item is number seventeen, council approval of an ordinance amending Title 13 Fire Protection and Convention of the City Code of Ordinances, adopting the State Firefighters Mediation Act and for other lawful purposes. This is the first reading.
This is the first reading, but basically this is just to recognize our fire disbursement allowed to be recognized as a new, under fire mediation or act.
Yes, any hand, Ms. Jackson?
This is the first reading. No, we, I have a question to-
Is it about this?
Yes. So, well, actually, it's about our business.
Well, let's get past this first, let's get past this. Let's move.
Does anybody here from Representative Firefighters to talk, speak to this?
But they will be next week.
No, she asked the question.
I asked my question. They will be next week.
She asked the question.
I'm answering.
The answer is no.
Right.
Okay. No further comments, we'll move on. Let me make sure I have a few more questions.
So there's an item that's approaching on the agenda, which I fail to acknowledge that it's number twenty. We don't have any information on that in our package, there's no resoluational ordinance.
That's how you measure that for services, for CISOs.
Is that a presentation?
It is.
Okay.
All right, Madam President. Madam President.
Item number eighteen, council approval of the first read of ordinance annexing certain property 5955 Fulton Industrial Boulevard within the City of South Fulton, Georgia, amending the official City of South Fulton zoning map, providing for severity, reviewing conflicting ordinances, providing for an effective date and other purposes.
Colleagues, I wanted to say this, we are voiding on the annexation, our first annexation at our last meeting. This was a document that was not provided at the time, and it's kind of an emergency meeting. If you would permit me, I would like to wait the first read and go in and do a, and put this up, go vote.
Yeah. So actually, Mayor, you can't do that, you still have to have two reads. And the way your annexations work, when you do, when you have your public hearing on the annexation, it doesn't annex the property on that date, there's still a process that you have to go through. Your annexations will have multiple effective dates, like for example, there is an effective date for ad alarm purposes, which is at the end of the year, there's an effective date for other purposes, which will depend on when you adopt this ordinance. My request, if you recall, I sent you an email, my request is that if you want the effective date to be as soon as possible, which would be July 1st, and that, again, is not the entire effective date, it's just the first available effective date for certain purposes. But if you want that to be July 1st, we can make it July 1st. You took away your 25th meeting, but you did schedule a special meeting. So if you're willing to put that on the agenda for the special meeting, then you can have the effective date July 1st. If you want to have the effective date August 1st, you can put this for second reading in July, it's your discretion. It's your discretion.
Madam, Madam Attorney. I am ready to try and fix this immediately. We should have done this. We should have done this prior. And with my conversation with the clerk, we said that we could do it. What was the base on that, Madam President?
It was based on the fact that she's trying to get it done. But if she says that you cannot do, waive a first reading on an annexation, then I pull that. But the nineteenth meeting is not a special meeting. It is a budget meeting only.
That is correct.
So, the parameters of what the meeting is is entirely a discretion of the council. So, if you say it's only going to be budget, then it's only budget. If you say it's going to be budget and something else, then that's what it is. So, you don't have to put this on your special meeting agenda. If there's a preference to have this effective earlier, then I would say put it on. If you don't want it earlier, then don't put it on.
I'm really trying to get you where you need to be. I really am. And get this done.
Well, my.
But when we said we're going to have a special meeting, that's what we said, a budget meeting.
Well, right now, the special meeting is just a budget meeting. The way your charter works, you cannot amend a special meeting today. Like, you can't today, you can't add items to the meeting agenda. So, in advance, you would have to add this as an item that you approve to go on that agenda. So, that way, all council members would have notice and the public would have notice that this would be an additional item that's going to go on the agenda.
So, we can make.
Mr. Madam, you want to speak on this?
I requested for the retreat and you accepted it as a retreat. If you want to add, it's up to you, but this will be a treat from eight thirty to four thirty. Here.
Okay, so, here's my point. Leave our retreat to where it is. If we have so much authority as a board and I ask to waive the first reading, and that's what we're going to do, and get you where you need to be, what's wrong with that?
So, Mayor, we can't waive. We have to have two reads. So, tonight will be the first read. So, whether you do it at the meeting you have coming up or whether you do it at the July meeting, you have to have that physical second read.
Ms. Madam.
Attorney Longford, hello, annexation laws, government under OCG Title thirty-six. And this is that, of course, the three main types of annexation. It also allows the hundred percent sixty man annexation by resolution. Can we just not make this a resolution because our process for resolution is different than our ordinance? Is that possible?
So, that is not possible for this. So, that section has three different types of resolutions. It has resolutions by hundred percent, sixty percent, and also by referendum. The hundred percent process requires an ordinance. Now, if we would have done this by referendum, we could have had a resolution. So, since we are doing this under the one hundred percent process, we have to have the ordinance in place.
Ms. Colleen.
We got an email about the announcement about the location of our budget meeting next week. I'm actually not comfortable with that location. So, if you are open to it.
That's a different subject.
Well, I was going to say, if you're open to it, we could add that to the agenda. And then, while we're on the subject of the agenda item, we can amend the special call meeting for next week.
You want to pan on that, Madam Attorney? But it's not germane to this issue.
So, I do agree with the mayor. It's connected in the sense that it's amending the agenda. So, I think Councilmember Colleen is trying to consolidate, not unnecessarily extend the meeting. But it is not directly related to the issue of whether we're going to add the annexation piece.
So, at this point, the first read, right?
Correct.
Madam President.
Ma'am, before you move on. You want to make a decision on annexation, especially when it's as important as related to Fulton Industrial. And so, in lieu of letting this pass by and this being a sensitive topic, it may be a good idea to break for ten minutes and discuss an executive session since it relates to that so that you guys can get a resolution and we don't leave this hanging. Can we, I didn't know if we could do that. I apologize, but I want to make sure we want to get this hung up. You're right, yes, ma'am.
So, you can't break for real estate for acquisition. I don't think the law is sufficiently clear that an annexation would be an acquisition to. Making my recommendation that you don't do it.
Okay. Ms. Madam.
I hope that we add this annexation approved to the agenda, budget agenda on June nineteenth second.
Is that proper? And you want to pan on that because it's not on our agenda.
Mayor, Counsel, if I may, the easiest thing to do is to make the budget meeting a special call meeting. And then, at the special call meeting, you have the budget and this item on the agenda.
If you make a special call meeting vote, the last step, I got to go where she gets in.
Well, according to, okay, so, our attorney, I still have the floor, right, Mr. Mayor? According to what our attorney just applied, that she is okay. It is legal for us to add this one item on our budget agenda for the second read at our budget hearing. She said, "We are the voting body to decide if that happens." I just made a motion. I just moved for that to happen based on what the attorney applied.
Okay. She's correct.
Any discussion? Hearing all those in favor?
I'm sorry, what's this?
We voted. Add them to the, all right? That passes you down. All right, yeah?
The next item is the information about emergency medical services for the City of South.
No, nineteen.
I'm sorry. Item number nineteen.
Yes, this is the first read. And basically, this legislation is just to allow for us to move to approve for our hotel motel tax to be increased from profit to the maximum eighty percent.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, Madam President.
Item number twenty, emergency medical services. City Manager.
Go ahead. I am. This is just a very, we've got quite a few inquiries regarding activities around emergency medical services. And Councilmember Gums actually introduced the request, I'm sorry, direction approved by the council for us to evaluate emergency medical services. And so, we will be releasing a small bid RFP to develop some type of recommendation and evaluation for the council. But there's also been quite a bit of information in the news recently about emergency medical services. And there's a misconception that the city actually oversees and implements that process. And so, tonight, I wanted to make sure to respond to all, but also provide some education to the public on how this really works. And so, just high level, the ambulance and zoning in Fulton County is not regulated by the City of South Fulton. It's actually fully overseen by the state of Georgia, specifically the Department of Public Health. So, while the city advocates and have done a solid job of that, we don't actually oversee it. And so, the actual division of these zones that are overseen and mandated by the state is divided into five zones here in Fulton County, which you see in front of you. And so, we're considered Zone Three, by the way, for Fulton County. And so, the ambulance zones in the county under Region Three is overseen by the EMS council, which prior to Chief Larry Fuge's retirement, we had a seat on the council. This is how we were able to advocate to change the license and Grady One. We'll call it a bid, which I'll get to here in a second. But again, that is not a process that is solely overseen by South Fulton or any of the South Fulton city. So, this Region Three council can recommend the manner in which ambulance zoning and the plan for what's considered South Fulton County is to be conducted. But we actually don't procure the service at all. And without having a seat on the Region Three council, we don't actually have input. For your knowledge, right now, on the Region Three council, Grady has three of, I believe, the six seats. And so, they're the vendor. So, we are advocating with Fulton County to actually retrieve our seat. I believe the mayor has already had a conversation with Chairman Pitts. And I've had conversations with both the county manager and their COO to advise them of the city's desire. And so.
And if I may, I think that the position we're in right now is the legality of how long of that person's set before it can be removed.
Yes, sir.
And so, that's what we're trying to give legal opinion on now. We already, to tell you that, we already have some people in mind to take that seat. We do. And we need someone from South Fulton to be in South Fulton.
Absolutely. And so, just moving forward in the presentation, back in ninety-six, when this process all started, the Atlanta South Ambulance was the EMS provider. There was no subsidy paid and Atlanta South only received money from fees that they collected transporting patients, which is very similar to what occurs now. So, at that time, South Fulton was the only area in the county that wasn't subsidized. So, basically, people paid down the rate is what that means with the subsidy. So, North Fulton, Rural Metro Ambulance, again, who ran it at the time, received a little over half a million dollars to make sure that the response times were under eight minutes. From Atlanta, Grady received about three and a half million dollars a year to make sure it was under eight minutes and so on and so forth. So, in two thousand, the bid was opened up and due to those slow response times, which sounds like a familiar story of what recently happened here in the City of South Fulton. So, if you look back at that time when this new model came into play, you will see that the Rural Metro ambulance service who received those funds received subsidies to keep their specific numbers down. So, that was from two thousand and two until two thousand and eight, where you see that millions of dollars were poured into this to make sure the response times were lower. In two thousand and eight, their contract was not renewed and the subsidy stopped. And in October of two thousand and fifteen, AMR purchased that company. And during that time, again, City of South Fulton, North Fulton County, provided any true oversight because we don't have the license. It was very public that there was a death in the City of South Fulton that while not directly tied to the poor service that we received from the vendor at that time, kind of caused a lot of concern. And so, our retired fire chief, myself, the mayor, and many of you on the council advocated for a change in service provision, which is how we got the state to allow us to open up the zones and get new providers who are interested. We now have Grady. And while we are not fully pleased with the service that we're receiving, we are much better off than we were under the previous vendor. To the point that while these numbers don't meet our regional or local expectations, it's a decrease of over forty percent in the response time since Grady has taken over. And it should probably be noted that it has not fully been a year since they've taken over and they took over early because once AMR did not win the new bid, they basically left the region and Grady took over so that there would not be a gap in service. What we have also seen is that while Grady charges less, every time EMS comes out and they transport, the cost is around sixteen hundred dollars per transport, which is extremely high. And so, just to give you a little bit of background, before we kind of talk about what you guys can do and what the city is doing already, is when you look at these response times, they are down across the board. But there are different things that the city is currently doing to make those times even lower. And so, one example of that is around alpha level calls, which is really what is driving our times up. And that is those calls that are non-life threatening, basic support, usually non-emergency. And so, the City of South Fulton, along with others, did not respond to alpha level calls based on, you know, lack of staffing, lack of equipment, et cetera, et cetera. Part of the reason we brought on those three additional units is so that we can respond to activities like this. So, effective, I believe, about a week ago, we made the decision to start responding to alpha level calls when Grady is at zero. Meaning that if they have ambulance, you know, some of it is managing expectation. Somebody calls to get transported downtown because they have a headache. You know, and Grady is out there with them, but it's not life threatening, then our units come out to kind of fill in the gaps from where they are. So, basically, we'll be automatically dispatched on alpha level calls that do have health issues, whereas chest pain, difficulty breathing, things that could lead to a health emergency. We will also respond to alpha level calls where Grady EMS doesn't have an ambulance responding at the time of dispatch. This will ensure that, one, our call times, they will decrease significantly, but it does put our units out into the city to kind of cover the gap. So, one thing that we will be doing is educating our residents on this impact. Because many times, I mean, just to be frank, some folks are catching a ride downtown leveraging the emergency medical services. And so, we're going to put some things in place to kind of educate how those types of decisions impact our response times and the safety of our residents. I do think you guys are well aware, but just for the public's knowledge, we have asked for the state to take legislative action to remove this prohibition on cities providing medical transport. Our partners in Dunwoody have taken it to the next level where they are really advocating for their own license. And so, we'll be bringing forward to you our desire to advocate in the same way so that the City of South Fulton will have a license. The point in that is that if we have a license, while we will still probably have to charge for the transport, you can imagine, we could do it for a third of the sixteen hundred dollars and put not only those resources to use, but manage the response time much better. So, currently, we will continue to monitor Grady's, they work to reach their nine-minute response time that they committed when it was awarded to them. But in our situation, we don't actually have the team to enforce anything under the current setup because we don't have the license. And so, that's just a brief update because there were so many questions coming in. We wanted to provide a fairly thorough response.
Councilwoman Scott.
So, thank you, Mr. Donald. I just have a few questions. First, good presentation. How did we have this Friday?
Well, it took us some time to respond. Remember, the article came out on Tuesday and some of the questions had, I'm sorry, on Friday of last week, which is after the close of the process. So, we knew we wanted to be responsive, but unfortunately, there was not enough time to put together a presentation that entered into the package. It actually was supposed to be a part of the city manager's report, but you will receive it at the close of the council meeting and then it'll also be added to the package and posted online.
Okay. My next question is, with, just for clarification purposes, the resolution that was passed was for us to explore all medical. the resolution that was passed was for us to explore all medical services within the city, not just emergency. But my concern is pretty much with the emergency services that we're getting in the city of South Fulton. And we are in a, I guess, understanding or partnership with Grady, correct? Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
Um, why isn't that Grady can't, do we have a depot in the city of South Fulton?
We do not. The depot for our portion of the region, I believe there is one in Atlanta, and there's one in Union City, close to the car dealership, so right outside of our city.
So as of right now, Grady is being dispatched out of either Atlanta or Union City to come save lives in the city of South Fulton.
Yes, ma'am.
So why are we not able to ask Grady to at least have a depot inside of the city of South Fulton to help us with number one, saving lives in our response times? I think that's a fair question, to at least have some type of presence inside of our city. I mean, it only makes sense if you have Grady ambulances coming from, all the way from Atlanta and trying to go to the end of South Fulton, the city of South Fulton. Of course, it's going to be eighteen minutes, especially depending on when you have traffic. So my question to you, city manager, I appreciate you advocating for us, but I would like for you and the mayor to advocate for a depot within the city of South Fulton. I definitely believe that will help with the response times, and then also the public will be happy because then, like Ms. Simpson had mentioned, she not ready to go yet. So I just think that's a fair, a fair trade-off. They're going to be doing business in our city, even if we have to park the cars at City Hall or make some type of, the ambulances at City Hall, making some type of provision for them to be inside of our city.
I don't know. We, no disagreement with you at all. I think it goes back to the fact, though, and I want to make sure I state that as a fact, that the city has advocated, and we've actually made that request as well as many others, but we do not have the teeth because we do not oversee the process, which is why we're fighting and advocating for a license. I think the second part of that is the reason we were able to advocate, and as you see, we had a strong voice, because while we were not alone, we were probably the strongest voice advocating for the change to even get Grady. And that is because we had a seat at the Region Three table. Right now, not having that seat, nor we don't pay one dime to Grady, nor do we oversee the process in which they're selected or implementing their activities. It is difficult to bring resolution to some of these challenges. And so I agree with you, and we'll continue to do so, and we'll report back to the council on our advocacy. But I think where we need some help and some of the power of our very strong and vocal elected officials, not only for the city of South Fulton, but the region, is that we have to advocate at the state level as well as in our region to get control of these services. Because right now, we're receiving them, but we don't, we literally, we've not given one dime of subsidy. We have not, we don't write the RFP, we don't evaluate the RFP, nor do we have any say in it. It's done at the state level for an activity that impacts local. And so we strongly need the advocacy of our regional leaders to change that.
So what, what we're trying to do, I guess, is bring all of the mayors, because it's seventy-five minutes to get to Palmetto. I mean, that just gives chills to me right now, just thinking about it. But I'm just saying, if all of the mayors get together in our South Fulton delegation, and we could get the residents pretty much to get behind us as well because you see how fallen the stacks are. I mean, can we create our own task force, go down and start organizing to get this done? I mean, what else can we do?
No, I think that's a great idea. I think those are all great ideas. It's partially the way that you were able to get Grady. I think having each one of you write the letters and make those telephone calls and make those changes is literally why the state opened up, because they had no other reason to. And as you see, it's the way that they did it in two thousand as well, that advocacy makes changes. But I think the advocacy that we have coordinated in the past has been to open up the zones and do another procurement. What I think we should be asking for now is to heck with another procurement. Give us our license and let us manage the emergency medical services for our city because nobody's going to do it better.
And the other thing, uh, between all of you, maybe I suggest we even have Grady stationed at Allen's Fire Station.
Either way.
And then that way we could have a response time. I've seen them around. If I was to actually, at the same time, you may be just getting that airport. But I mean, we actually be stationed in a...
We need an established depot.
Right. That's just a suggestion, okay? All right. Uh, Mr. Chris Brown.
I'm not going to repeat the counsel on the dump, but I agree with what she said. I also had a question based on your presentation. Did you say that Grady had three seats at the table?
Yes.
Is that a conflict of interest?
So I don't know the bylaws of the Region Three Council, but private sector folks have always had a seat. But I just think it's a disservice to South Fulton, as the largest city, not to have a seat at the table.
One suggestion I do have, and this is for you, city manager. I know when Scott Ridge was dealing with his issues around, of course, the city breaking away, their city manager came and made a presentation at GMA. I think the city of South Fulton should consider putting this forward for discussion so that we have a weight of a GMA to also advocate around this issue. And I do, I love the mayor's idea of figuring out a way to create a depot. And that might be something that, you know, the other cities might get on board. You're South Fulton Municipal Association, etc. I'm sure all of them would offer one, a location in their city and their fire station if they believed it could include response time for everybody. So mayor, I'm looking forward to you kind of taking that torch with these other cities and getting them there. Thanks.
So the Region Three Board, you said Chief Few was on that board?
He was, yes, ma'am.
And so because he was on the board, did we have the ability to replace him with who we want? So it's a competitive process?
No. It's a, that appointment is made by the county who oversees the Region Three appointments, and they've already made a replacement to that board. And it is a great, it is a Grady person, which is the third, I believe, Grady person on that board.
So who's over the, who's over the Region Three appointments?
No, so it's the county. So I think that if I'm not...
South Fulton County?
Mm-hmm. Fulton County Board of Commissioners, this man.
All right. Thank you, uh, managing, that's right.
Next item on the agenda is Item Twenty-Seven, Council Approval of Urban Redevelopment Agency Established With Need and Area of Resilience.
Okay, this is the approval, this is a resolution, a resolution to approve the establishment, the need for establishing an urban redevelopment agency. Yes, and I am, I am moving to approve.
I can move the second discussion. Uh, Mr. Colley.
I'm unclear because I've seen a couple of different maps. Is our entire city in this area?
So cannot answer? No, no, our entire city is not in the urban redevelopment. From my understanding, I'm going to ask Mr. Malazi, the city manager, and the attorney to respond where necessary. Um, we were given a list of capital projects. And so in order for those capital projects to be addressed under this urban redevelopment, that the location has to be in urban redevelopment. Am I correct in saying that? So in, in essence, this map is going to have to be readjusted. It's going to be readjusted.
So my concern is about the, like, what the purpose of the URA is and what we are using it for. Because I don't know that those two things are congruent. I, I feel like we are drawing a, like, URA boundary around a list of projects that we want to get done. And I don't believe that that is the right way to do it for two reasons, both which lie in the name urban redevelopment. Uh, urban redevelopment authority is defined where a predominance of buildings are dilapidated, deteriorating, or obsolete, where predominance of streets are defective and inadequate, where a substantial number of deteriorated or deteriorating structures constitute. So we're talking about dilapidated, deteriorating, inadequate, defective. And to have so much of our city drawn in an area where we're saying is dilapidated, inferior, defective, um, gives me pause. I, I don't know, I don't know that the residents of Butler Road or Union Road want to think of themselves as living in a blighted area.
Oh, please.
And the, and, and I say that as I, I have family in all seven areas. So, so, um, and then the second issue is the first word of the authority, which is urban. I don't know that all, that we want to define so much of our city as urban, right? We have areas that are rural, we have areas that are suburban. I am wondering what happens because, Councilwoman Gill, you talked a lot about how we need to reform our comp plan. I don't know what it does to our comp plan. I don't know what it does to the DCA when we draw this wide swath and declare this area as urban. Um, I do know that there are a lot of projects that we want to get done. Also have lots of tools to do them. We have a splosh that will expire in twenty twenty-one. We can add those to the splosh, particularly around parks projects. Mr. Phillips, our parks director, has often mentioned to us that splosh with park projects have an eighty percent passive rate. So there are just multi, there's a myriad of ways to tackle these things. And, and I, I feel like someone went somewhere and heard that we could use urban redevelopment for capital projects, and everyone was like, listen, throw everything into this. And I just don't know that that's the right, um, how, that's the right way to go.
Okay, uh, are you still?
Um, no, no, you're... Well, I asked the attorney to speak to this, and I asked, or Mr. Malazi, I asked more the city manager to speak to this.
Mr. Baker was in the queue next.
Mr. Mayor, you...
Mr. Baker was in, uh, in the next, Mr. Colley was in the queue down to the bacon, and we'll get back to you.
Okay, I don't have a problem with this, but I do because I need to make a motion to amend this ordinance actually recognizing myself as a sole sponsor of the URA resolution before council committee. I requested this according to, pursuant to our policy, and I was the first to verbalize as well as to document this. So I'd like to make motion to recognize myself.
Well, you understand, since we have a motion on that, we have to wait to vote on that, and if that vote fails...
So I can amend this?
You can't say legislation.
Do you have that legislation?
Yes, this is mine.
But we have documentation.
Hold up, hold up, hold up. It doesn't matter. Regardless of who it is, we try to get the, uh, as I, Mr. Baker has the floor.
Okay, so I just want to know what the process is, if that's the case, and then we can move forward.
So the process would be, since there is a motion to be set on the floor, we would have to vote for that, and then if that fails, then you could make a subsequent vote, a subsequent motion.
Well, while I have the floor, can you speak to any documentation regarding initial sponsorship of this request, ma'am?
So I think that the issue with, with the council members is they're, pursuant to your policy, the first person who's put in writing by email that they want to sponsor the legislation becomes the sponsor. And it's a very, very, um, this added, you know, sheer...
Who's the attorney?
The way, the way the universe works, the council members submitted the request one minute apart.
Excuse me. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to say that it's not your name. I don't care who's got there first. The issue is about the URA. If there's a trouble to that, you want to add something to it, you want to take something away. I just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but I have the floor, and Mr. Mayor, you received this as well. I mean, I, I didn't want to make a big to-do, a walk in it on, but you, you know that this is my legislation. And yes, you do. I mean, I'm uncomfortable that I didn't have to say it like that, and then we even have to go through this public. I just would, so the way to do it is to allow this to pass for a night and then make another motion as you are the parliament.
That's correct, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, please, go ahead, Mr. Gill.
Okay, I want to show my colleagues what was given to us at our last meeting and to the community, which clearly lays out what a URA is. It just happens to use the word urban. It doesn't mean that you're talking about a city. Just like when you say urban gardening and urban agriculture, it's not all in the city, okay? That's number one. Number two, and the reason why I read this, though, so thoroughly is because there is nothing in here for District Four, nothing on the map. I wanted to know, how does it work and how doesn't it work? And it says, "The URA is bond financing, and it's a multi-step process and requires the passage of a resolution, the creation of a redevelopment plan, the holding of a public hearing, and other steps. But it does not require a voter referendum." So then I wanted to find out, what did the word blight mean? Because it used to be slum, and then it was expanded for the word blight. The definition of pocket of blight is expansive and includes generally areas which have existing conditions that are detrimental to the public welfare. It could be a broken-down building. It can be you don't have sewer capacity, you don't have lights on your street. It could be a whole bunch of all-encompassing word. Now, so far, this is all I needed, really. And then it talks about, then it goes on to, the URA is what we're doing now. We're trying to get around to agreeing that we will have one. Next, you have to have commissioners, you have to have people that sit on the board. And that's what it is, okay? So I looked at the map for the URA. Oh, and I also went to one of the bond people, and I talked to him. And he said, "If your district needs major infrastructure improvements..." Was that, was that, uh, termination, Mr. Corrigan? Get that. Is that her time then over? Did she not set the clock? Which one is it?
Yeah, concluded in five minutes.
Okay. So I'm almost finished. "If your district needs major infrastructure improvements, you can get it by including it in the URA." So here's the map, right here. I passed it out to everybody, everybody has this map. And I have on this map areas that I want to be included in this map so we can be part of the URA, and we are under development.
I think that's fair.
So I think that's fair.
All right.
So I, I, I want this to be added to the resolution.
Councilwoman Gill, you hit on a lot of things I wanted to talk about. Um, you know, we've heard a number of presentations. I will say I don't think they have been as succinct as we need them, and we haven't gotten all the information at one time. And so my concern is I don't want us to rush and get this wrong. Um, you know, I was looking at the DCA site, and it also talks about, once we kind of set this map, it's like a three, it's, it's not easy to change the boundaries of this map. So we really need to get it right. And so I don't know if we can allot some time because of the tree to get it right because not all cities use this to pay for capital improvement projects. So there are other tools, and I think we need to look at the whole list of options. Because I definitely want these projects done. because I definitely want these projects done, but I don't want us to miss devils.
Okay, Ms., Councilwoman, uh, Guns, and we'll conclude, and Councilwoman Willis.
So, um, two quick things, just to respond to Councilman Colleen, um, this definitely is not about blighted areas. Again, this is about, um, adding more infrastructure, we need lights, we need a lot of things on Button Road and Union Road, so we're not, there are no special projects that we're trying to get in that particular area, we're just trying to improve the area. Now, I would like for Mr. Pike, if you don't mind, to come to the podium. I promise you this won't be painful.
Painful?
So, in regards to the URA, and just to make sure that we're clear, is this just for blight areas?
So, to establish a URA, you have to designate the district as slum and blight, part of the requirement to utilize the funding for the URA. So you will have to determine that through the resolution, that this area is being designated by the city as slum and blight.
Will that impact property values?
It will definitely, depending on where you do it. I would think that most citizens probably don't want slum and blight mixed to their property.
Okay, um, okay, and Mr. Malazin, thank you, Mr. Pike.
Thanks.
So with the understanding we have placed all of our capital improvement projects within, um, this URA.
That's correct.
Please give a background of why you did that for the purpose.
So, we had a shortfall of revenues, as we advised, we shortfall of revenues that we had in operation, so what we did was, you can't borrow money to fund operation, you borrow money, it's advisable, you can, as we studied, as you know, that we had to borrow time to operation because we were starting, but now we have been in operation for two years, so we had to find a way of borrowing money to fund capital projects, so that what we had enough can be on the operation. So we looked into various ways of how we can borrow money, there are several, there are different banks that they would love to borrow us money. However, payment is not on our side. Our tax now, we are leaving eleven point five seven nine, we are capped to thirteen point four, beyond thirteen point four meals, you have to go out there and have referendum. Then we had to look into what are some other areas that you can borrow at a cheaper area, and we found out that the URA, you can borrow up to twenty million dollars without increasing taxes. You will not increase tax, you just assign point five or point three, depending on how much you want, this will be for capital improvement. So far, we went through to itemize the capital that we had for twenty nineteen, and the staff department heads, they come up with this list that you have, and these are one point four million dollars for public safety building, we have, we assigned the fire stations improvement, three hundred thousand dollars, security cameras for various areas throughout the city, about fifty thousand dollars, tennis center courts repairing, six hundred thousand dollars, recreation center repairs, five hundred thousand dollars, then we have, um, J-DAT, about five million and sixty, real estate purchasing, about sixty thou, so all that one came up to five point three million dollars.
So is this the only tool that is available for us to do our financing?
This was the cheapest that you can have without raising taxes.
This is the cheapest way, but with, it's not the only?
No, it's not.
That we explore the other options?
They are there, you can borrow from the bank tomorrow, they are there, but it's the paying of it. You have two things you have to, it will be costly, and you have to raise taxes, no matter what, you have to raise tax.
So you're saying that this will be the only way that we can go without raising taxes?
You will not raise taxes on this, and you will borrow even more. The other one, you, you can borrow ten million dollars, you have to raise taxes, you can borrow five million dollars, you still have to raise taxes. This one, you can borrow up to twenty million dollars, you will not be paying without raising taxes, but again, you can do a lot. I have not received any capital project from council people, all these ones I'm talking about, they are from department leads, so we have not. And the map here is across the city, that will show where the tennis courts are, will show where these, um, fire stations are throughout the city, and out of those ones, you can add some projects to this. We will not have the entire city as URA, and there's no area that will affect residential that you call it a URA. Out of these projects, there's none, and I don't expect council will have projects within residential to designate it as URA, because that one will affect property values.
Uh, Ms., Ms. Willis?
Yes, so my understanding is that, um, when Mr. Wall did make his presentation, and Mr. Selby made his presentation, they came twice, and I've actually spoken with them, um, about it individually, and Mrs. Walker, I have documentation where I sent you the actual legislation that is on this agenda, um, going back from May sixteen, from the time, and I asked you, was it okay for me to sponsor my own URA legislation, because from what I was hearing from, uh, Pro Tem Baker, I was not agree, in agreement with it. So his legislation is still in the process. Why I was not put on the agenda, I don't know, but I have documentation of everything that I sent you and written, but the thing that was told to me was that we should not include residential communities in the URA. So I was very intentional about my map, not to include residential communities. So the capital projects that I included in the map that I submitted, which is on this agenda, is Welcome Hall Road, which is the fire station, and also, uh, the South Fulton Tennis Center, which will have capital projects, is not in around any, um, residential community section. Okay, you approve?
So that, so that is correct, so with respect to the two varying versions. So Councilman Baker actually was in a, was he objected to you putting your item, um, on the agenda, and his objection was that he was first in time as far as claiming sponsorship of this topic, so my, I advised him that I could not stop you Right. from putting it on the agenda, because I didn't have the authority to do that, and that would have to be a decision that was made by the council, and that's where, where we are tonight.
But I also asked you, I also, I also asked you, you know, let's, let's be honest, because I asked you, I said, if our legislation is different, I said, if I am writing my own legislation, I said, will that stop me from writing it? You said, no. You said, you can too both write the legislation as long as it diff, it was different. So I started sending you emails about what I wanted in my legislation back in April, I mean, back, as far back as May sixteen, and that's what's on, reflected on here.
So I, I don't interpret the policy, if someone claims sponsorship of a topic, then I interpret the policy to only allow that person to be the sponsor of that topic. That's the way I just personally interpret it. But the problem here is that I can't stop, I can't stop, I, I can't tell you that, look, he's going to be the sponsor, because I don't have authority to do that, so I said, just submit both of your items on the agenda and let the council decide. So I mean, my preference would be to not make the decision as to who's the sponsor of this, and to let the council make the decision, because I don't think I have the authority to tell either of you that you're the sponsor, or you're the sponsor.
But this is my question.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
I can.
Let us go.
Excuse me, what is my?
But can I speak to the map, too? Because Councilwoman Willis asked two questions.
Who, who approved the motion?
I did.
Okay, we have first, we have second, a motion on the second, right? Right, let us go.
Well, we're discussing, it was motioned by.
No, we're not, I cut discussion off with Willis.
Sorry, let me ready now.
Because I cut discussion off with Willis, right?
Make a motion on the second.
It was motioned by Councilmember Willis, and second by Councilmember Guns, we need to give the address.
Right, so there's a motion on the floor. I'm asking for the vote.
We don't, I'm asking to amend my, my motion, because the map needs to be amended.
You recognize him, we have a vote.
But this, this is, I mean, I'm asking to.
He's called for the vote.
I'm asking to amend my legislation.
He's the chairman, so I'll let him speak.
That's, that's technically called for the vote, I call for the vote. Are those in favor?
Is the map commencing or not?
With the, um, I asked to, I can, I can amend my vote.
You want to add?
So the mayor did call for the vote, so I guess it'll be up to him to withdraw the call for the vote.
Wait a minute.
But unless he, when you cannot amend it.
Let me tell you why I'm not going to draw my call for the vote, because I'm not going to sit here thirty minutes and talk about who came first. That's not what we need to do, all right? And so, I mean, you can come back, we can take the vote, can she come back and make any amendment she wants?
She can make, she cannot make that same motion, but she's making alternatives.
That's, okay, all in favor?
What are we voting on? You voting? No, wait a minute.
You vote, what you on what you, on the floor?
I withdraw, I withdraw my motion. Now, I would like to make another motion.
And I'm in the queue.
But I would like to make another motion, I would.
Who's recognized, Mr. Mayor?
I'm gonna recognize the maker of the motion to withdraw her motion. Would I be corrected during that, Ms. Madam Attorney?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm gonna recognize her to withdraw her motion.
Now, I would like to make another motion.
But Councilman Baker was next in queue, so if you withdraw, then he would be there as an issue.
Well, that's if, Mayor, are you gonna recognize him to speak? I'm talking to the queue.
I said, this is getting ridiculous.
Yes, it is.
I said, and you can quote me, Madam Attorney, during the time that Ms. Willis would be the last one to speak on this issue, okay? So far as I'm concerned, anything after Ms. Willis ain't in the queue. So now, if you want to get in the queue after she makes her thing, you can get in the queue then. You understand me, Madam Attorney?
The queue is already in the queue, right?
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, you think the mayor has a discretion to allow the queue.
So you take your name and I put it back in?
Yes. Okay, now, put your question.
I would like to, uh, amend, with, I would like to move to recognizing for the redevelopment agency, establishing a need for the, uh, redevelopment agency, um, with the amendment to amend the map.
Probably move to second, Mr. Colleen.
When you clarify how you want the map amended.
I want to move.
Was suggestion from, back?
I want suggestions, I want us to go down the line and get suggestions from each Because I can't speak to what people want in their area in the URA.
Mr. Baker, you're out.
The map, I am amending, I'm, I'm requesting to amend the map with input from everyone to what they want in their, in the U, in the URA, because I don't want to speak to what everybody wants in that district.
So I, I would rephrase the motion, I move that we have discussion on amendments to the map. And then, once you have that discussion, then someone make a motion to specify on the map to be amended.
Okay, well, I move that we have discussion on how we should be, how we should redo the map for the URA.
Second. You still second? Okay, probably move to second, we have discussion, and Mr. Colleen's in the queue. Um, thank you all for staying for the show tonight. Uh, it seems abundantly clear to me that for many reasons, issues of the map, issues of real estate evaluations, issues of who's name, who's name goes at the top, I think it's clear that we're not ready to pass this tonight. Does that seem clear to you all? Because it seems.
No, you can't do that, I won't ask you to do that.
So it seems clear to me, and so I think what we need to do is table items twenty-one and twenty-two.
And twenty-three.
And twenty-three, and just, uh, we, clearly there's more discussion, and, and believe me, I, I understand how difficult it is to have your development authority table, but I think that we're not ready to make this decision tonight. That is not the motion on the floor. No, no, that's just the call. Yeah, okay, uh, uh, would be, Mrs., uh, she's, I'm not, Councilwoman Robb.
I'm gonna agree with Councilman Colleen for different reasons. First, we were planning paying for capital improvements out of general funds, we have, but it's been presented here lately like this is the only option, and I know that's not a fact. I need the economic development administrator, the city manager, and the finance CFO to get in one room and bring us the best solution for how to deal with that list, and it may not be one size fit all. That's what needs to happen. And also, even if we are moving forward with the redevelopment authority, and I'm not against it, there are all these other requirements that we don't have in front of us to be able to move forward, and so I want something that's comprehensive. We get, we, we're making decisions without having all the information, and that's not acceptable. It's unacceptable.
All right, uh, I'm going to go to Councilman Baker.
Thank you for allowing me to be recognized, and I would like to say this, because some people just learned about a URA in our last meeting, and I've been working with this stuff since November of last year, which was the reason for the request. I know, because I conferred with our council, how to amend the map, because I didn't just talk to one other person or two other people. I would like to make, according to what parliamentary procedures call, a substitute motion, and I would like to add District Four, the designated areas of District Four in this motion, and again, recognize myself as the sole sponsor of the URA resolution before this council. Is there a second?
Here he goes, that feels a little bit.
So what I want to do, what I want to do is, it seems like there's a lot of discussion, more discussion that needs to be had. Number one, um.
Can you approve? Your attorney, this is.
Okay, you were.
Now she can do that.
I got you.
Um, I knew that this was going to be difficult, and I know we have a lot of different pieces of information coming from different places, so I really do agree about the comprehensive part, and because it involves so much money for a long period of time, I think we need to take a step back, and I really think that we need to deal with it on the nineteenth, where we're in the retreat, and really talk about it. We can fight behind closed doors, okay? But I think, I can see, I can see now that it is just a little bit too much, and I really do appreciate the fact that, you know, my district is being considered, I really do believe that, but I really think that we really need to get it right, and it's not, we just got too much going on. So that's my suggestion. I think we need to do that for the URA, and I think we need to do it for the URA committee, and I think we need to hold the, um, District One, I think we need to deal with all three of those things in the retreat.
Okay, uh, Robb, when you go on. Second.
So I agree, I'm gonna withdraw my, there was a motion on the floor. I'm going to withdraw my motion, and I'm gonna ask that we table this legislation, and we add this to the agenda when the budget, um, retreats. Um, I would ask Mr. Pro Tem, um, submit any documentation that you said you've been working on since November, because she has all of my documentation, and I, I am willing to, I am, I am willing to co-sponsor this, because it's all about, it's in the best interest of the city.
So that was a, uh, that was, excuse me, that was a motion to, uh, withdraw, just a second.
Yeah.
Second. Probably move to second, all in favor? Thank you. I, I'm gonna say this lastly, and just as the mayor's position, I don't like spending time over little things, you know, when, when the. You know, when, when the big issue is, we have bigger things to do. I, I don't care if the dog in the backyard put the resolution on the floor. The important thing is to work for the people of the city and get it done. Spend too much time arguing about, it's mine, it's yours, there's too much time. So I just want to put that out there, as we go forward with this thing, and I'm glad that you removed it. Y'all can co-sponsor, hug, and kiss, and make love.
We haven't voted to table.
And then we move to the floor. Huh?
We haven't voted to table all of them yet.
Like a motion to table, uh, items twenty-one, twenty-two.
And twenty-three.
That's the fire station.
And twenty-three.
As well as twenty-three, I know. Is there a second?
Second.
Copy, move to second, end discussion.
Yes, yes.
Hold on, is it cute, Rob?
Um, as a part of the discussion, I, I'm gonna go back to what I said. When we get to this retreat, all three parties, because I think every party that I mentioned had its own different pieces. It's not just attorneys writing a resolution, it's a redevelopment plan, it's so many pieces.
Right.
And they need to come together in one package that makes sense.
Right, I got you there, too.
Well, just to clarify, your plan actually comes after these two.
Regardless, but even if you look at it, it's certain criteria that's in there that should inform when you're looking at the areas. That's a fact. Even if you don't have a narrative, you look at it, there's certain things that need to be in place.
Okay, I'll do, uh, will is I, I'll, I'll cut the conversation off, Mr. Khalid.
So Mayor, I'm counting on you to make sure that those parties get together when they bring it back.
Look at my country.
Mr. Mayor, you made a comment that, um, that me and Mr. Pro Tem are fighting over legislation, and we're actually not. We don't have a problem with each other, we both have been working on it, and I guess there was not communication. So we have agreed to work on this legislation. So we don't have a problem with this, so please don't put that out there, because we don't have a problem with each other.
Sounds like what it is. But, uh, uh, no, no, we got Mr. Khalid and-
No, I'm, I'm, I think we're too-
Okay, let's call for the vote, all, all in favor? That unanimous, Madam Furter.
And now you need to, to, to move to add these three items to the special committee agenda on the nineteenth.
I'd like to make a motion that we add these three items, um, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three to the special call meeting on the nineteenth.
Second. Copy, move to second, end discussion.
I have discussion.
Yes.
Um, we're, we're talking about the agenda on the nineteenth. I just want to be clear on that, if it's not on the special call, if it's not on this numbered agenda, does that mean that we cannot talk about it? I just, I just want to be clear that we're going to talk about the budget calendar, the calendar for hearings, and the time-sensitive things, that we're talking about all of that.
Since his motion prevailed, you will have fi, you will have five things on the agenda for the nineteenth that will be these three items, the budget, and the annexation, and then the mayor will set the order.
Okay, the budget includes the calendar.
Yeah.
We may need a second day.
But for clarification, are we bringing both of the council members' U R A resolutions for the nineteenth, or are you guys agreeing?
We're gonna, we're gonna take it out, Mr., we're gonna break both.
Break both?
Yes, that'll be true.
Uh, okay, 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 okay. Uh, Madam Furter, make sure that we advertise properly, uh, so people can know what we're doing. Right, alright?
And this, this is a, even though it's a special committee, it's a open meeting.
Y'all can come, I'll be saying. Okay.
Well, how about the notice?
Let's vote, that's what I'm talking about, the notice.
I mean, the timeframe, because we have to be-
And I'll be on the notice, I'll talk to you when I get out there.
It's three days.
Yeah. I'll talk, I'll talk to you when I get up there. Okay, uh, all in favor? All in favor? That passes unanimously, Madam Furter?
That's the last item on the agenda.
Do we do comments?
Give me a, I'll take a motion.
I want to adjust.
Second, copy, move to second, all in favor? Thank you all for, for coming.